At six thirty. Okay, call the media auditor at six thirty two. There is an error on the agenda and the public hearing should be next. So I'll entertain a motion to move the public hearing up or we can start with the other things and hopefully get more people.
People are popping in right now pretty well, so.
Okay, good. So we'll, okay, if we just have a motion to move the public hearing?
Motion to start the public hearing in a couple of minutes.
Second.
Okay, Bill, give it a second. Josh, roll call, please.
Gina.
Yes.
Carlton.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Stacy.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Maureen. Thank you. The motion was approved.
Okay, great. Carlton, it's all yours. Carlton has, uh, Carlton has prepared the presentation and we'll go over it, so.
Well, I'm gonna get there in a second.
Okay.
Now, I can't see what you guys are seeing. All I can see is what I have on the screen. Can everybody see the introductory? I think we're gonna go ahead. We've got a number of people that have joined.
Okay, we just see you.
Right.
Well, let me get back out of this and let me go into Zoom, wherever it is. Share, okay.
Here we go.
I'll get this learned sooner or later. How do I go to full screen? Okay. Oh, there it is. And I can see everybody. Fantastic. Okay, thank you, guys, for joining and listening.
Just to start, when you get to the question, Pat, Josh and I will monitor so you can you can pay attention to what you say, won't you?
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome, everybody. I prepared this with two things in mind. One is to meet the annual requirement to do a preservation CPC hearing. We're going to have a presentation now that goes through a little bit of history, that kind of thing. And the other goal I have is to inform not only the public about what CPC is about, but also we have a few new members on the committee. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to also educate them a little bit more as to what's going on. So what I'm going to do, here's the agenda. We're gonna do a group exercise process and we're gonna practice it in a couple of minutes. So we're gonna know who's here so we can actually include that in the, and this is being recorded, by the way. So we'll include that. But basically, I'm gonna go through the background. You know, what the Community Preservation Act is about, what the Community Preservation Committee here in town has been doing. There's a number of definitions that we need to have a very full understanding of as to what we can and cannot do. I'm gonna discuss a little bit about the funding sources we have and what the history of funding of the CPC Committee through the CPA Community Preservation Act. And then do some, it's gonna be a little bit tedious to go through current goals. But I think because of where we're trying to take this, we need to have a good understanding of what the Community Preservation Act goals are. And then we'll talk, touch on CPC activities that are ongoing. We'll touch a bit on the budget. It's a lot. And then we're gonna go through this, what I call the group exercise process to get public feedback on, and get some feedback where we are. So given that, this is called the Chat-a-Fall Group Exercise. It's new to me. I blame my daughter who told me about it. If it goes, doesn't work well. But basically, what's happens, I'll post something for the participants to respond to in the chat box. The chat box is down at the bottom somewhere. There's an example. This is one of the questions I'll ask later on. Are the current CPC historic goals still relevant? If not, why not? And then what does, folks that are on here will type response. And I've tried to customize it so that you will be able to use a code system. So people that are typing impaired like I am only have to type one or two letters to respond. And then we'll give you a little bit of time. Then I'll have, ask you to share. And what happens is everybody's share comes in at the same time. And it comes into the chat box. And then we can look at the responses and we can have a discussion around that. So again, question, response, give you a little time. Post to the chat and then we'll talk about it, okay? So let's get started. Please tell us what hat you are wearing tonight. Are you an interested resident, an applicant potentially, the town staff, town leader elected, a town leader volunteer committee, business owner, a developer, and otherwise? So right now, I'm going to ask you to go to chat and use the codes, resident R, potential applicant A, et cetera, et cetera. So go ahead and type your numbers in and then in a half a minute or so, I'll see how we do. I see things coming in. Hey, this is working nicely. Okay, one more time. I see everybody pretty much has responded. So I'm going to close that part and look at the chat. Oh, now I can't see what the answers were. How do I do that? Thank you, chat. So basically, it looks to me like we have a lot of volunteers, a resident, and an elected official, and we have a good cross mix, not as many as I would like, but we're on our way. So next, next question is, how comfortable or how familiar are you with the Community Preservation Act? The coding is fairly simple, very familiar, familiar, but I understand the basics, somewhat familiar, but not familiar at all. So if everyone could take a minute to use that code that is there just to respond, I would appreciate it.
One thing, be careful because I just want to put my thing in and it looks like I'm responding just to Bill. So just be careful. Make sure it's sent to everyone.
Yeah, good point. So we have a pretty good cross section here of people who understand it. And that's great. So I can try to get this a little bit more simplified. And if everybody submitted, I'm gonna submit the next one. I just have to close my screen. Okay. Oh, I thought I had three things. Just a minute. I'm learning while I go. What's up?
Okay, can I just interrupt for a second? Do you want, Josh, or I, after one question? Just to type in chat when it's a new question, because otherwise all the Bs and Fs and everything are going to run together.
Yeah, just put, just put new. Somebody type new and send it to everyone. So here's the other, here's the other question I am asking for the participants to do. You can just enter the most relevant number. Have you been a resident in Bridgewater or associated with Bridgewater for under five years, five to fifteen, sixteen to twenty-five, and over twenty-five? So if you'd all just respond that way, we'll get a feeling for where we all are. Looking good. It looks like we got a few have been here for a while, some that are very long. I'm a four. I've been here for twenty-five years. Been involved with the town a lot. So looking at the responses, sort of a lot of fours. And a few that need some more information. So we'll continue with this. I did that one. I rolled this. So I'm gonna get into a bit of the presentation. There are one hundred and eighty-nine communities that have adopted Community Preservation Act. It's fifty-four percent of the towns and cities. The map shows in orange, the cities, in green are towns. Bridgewater was designated in April of two thousand and five. Just some quick statistics. Over two point six billion dollars has been raised for preservation of communities. The Community Preservation Act has had over fourteen thousand projects. More than eight thousand seven hundred affordable housing units. And here's a fun one I like. Everybody thinks in acres, thirty-two point five six acres. I grew up dealing with sections. A section is six hundred and forty square, eight, six hundred and forty acres. And that's a square mile. So when you do the acres to miles, it's fifty square miles of open space has been preserved in Massachusetts. That's a pretty impressive number. There's over sixty-three hundred appropriations for historic preservation. And about three thousand outdoor recreations have been initiated. So it's been very strong in all the areas. And if I can just learn to do the click, I will, there. So we also, this is a chart that the Department of Revenue put out. There are four areas that we can deal with, open space, historic, and recreation. That's creating recreation as well as acquiring land for recreation and housing, and it's affordable housing. So the nouns that go with this is open space. For example, you can acquire land. You can create open space. You can preserve open space. And you can rehabilitate or restore. And I'll go into those in a moment. But under open space, it's only if the land was acquired with CPA money can you in fact rehabilitate or restore. Another example is historic. Of course, we can't create history. It happens. But we can acquire, we can preserve, and we can rehabilitate. Recreation is a yes everywhere. And the only place that we can support, and I'll provide the definition in a minute, is housing. So we can acquire it, we can create it, we can preserve it, we can support it. And so that's, that's basically what we go by. And you have to be eligible. So here's some definitions. Open space is obviously land to protect existing things like future well field, well fields, aquifers, recharge areas, watershed land, agricultural land, grasslands, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Wetlands, those kinds of things. Historic resources are buildings, structures, vessels, real property, documents, or artifacts listed on the state register of historic places or determined by the local Historic Preservation Commission to be significant in the history, archaeology, architecture, or culture of the town. Recreation land. Land for active or passive recreation, passive like walking trails, active like pickleball court. But not limited to the use of land for community gardens, trails, non-commercial youth and adult sports, and the use of land as a park, playground, or athletic field. Things you cannot fund with CPA monies are things like a dog racing, a track, use of land for stadium, gymnasium, or similar structure. Community housing is low to moderate income families and individuals. And moderate being less than eighty, a hundred percent of the area median income, low is eighty percent. And it's all based on the US HUD Housing Urban Development definitions. One more set of definitions. Acquisition is to obtain property by whatever this lists here, purchase, devise, grant, rent, all those things. And it includes eminent domain taking. That's an important fact. Creation is to bring into being. Actually, that was not defined well, so the city of Newton sued for that. Or Sidemen sued City of Newton, and there was a clear definition now. Preservation is to protect personal property from harm, injury, or destruction. I had another thing coming up. There it is. An example is of the historic preservation is particularly important because CPA funds can be spent for upgrading any systems to modern codes in a historic building. This is important because we did have an application before us for some upgrades and it was not clear. That has been since clarified and it's right there in the definition of preservation and rehab. And rehab, restorations, capital improvements, repairs, et cetera. We cannot pay for maintenance. Hopefully, everybody has a good sense of what I've said. If not, speak up, raise your hand. Somebody will see where you are. I can't see everybody. So I'm gonna go to the annual budget, seeing none. Going to the annual budget. The annual budget that we set comes from two, two factors, local surcharge and the state trust fund money that is funded by fees on gigs, applications, et cetera. So there are several categories, but the important ones are that the Community Preservation Committee must recommend to the town council for budgetary purposes at least ten percent for housing, ten percent of our annual income for housing, for open space, and historic preservation. We have an administrative account that we don't have to go to the town council to make the appropriation. We can request that directly. And I'll talk about that a little bit more. And then we have another, the purple one here. It's a budgeted reserve that can be used for any of those characteristics we just talked about. The CPA Administrative Fund is important because it can enable the town or to hire new staff, not staff that are already on board, but a new staff to help administer the Community Preservation Act in town. We can hire rational help for such things as appraisals, consultants, legal assistance, general studies, and importantly, due diligence. We've had a couple of projects that applied in the order of a hundred thousand dollars, but with little to no scope. And so we made the decision in that case to use administrative funds to actually get the due diligence we need. We funded them to provide and do the work they needed to do, and I'll talk about that later. Also, we have to advertise for this public hearing, and we can do other miscellaneous. So that's where our money comes from and goes to. Another question that has raised in several situations has been who's eligible to receive CPA funds? The Community Preservation group that supports all of us put out a training session when they indicated specifically we can fund and CPC can recommend to the legislative body any kind of government entity project, also nonprofits. And in a caution place, they say non-incorporated entities or corporations, et cetera, and individual homeowners. And there are some laws in the, in the books that help us decide whether we can or cannot fund that. The important pieces here are CPA funds may not be used to supplant funds being used for existing community preservation. In other words, if it's been appropriated, we can't add, supplement it. We can, we can, we can put some things down, but we can't replace that money. And then the other thing that's, I think I mentioned earlier, maybe not, we cannot pay for maintenance of any real or personal property. We do ask for maintenance plans when they're dealing with a building, that kind of thing. But we really cannot pay for maintenance. That's not any of the definitions. So in Bridgewater, moving on, in Bridgewater, we're a standing ministerial committee. That means we can advise, but we also have lots of financial fiscal responsibilities. We have done over forty-four CPA projects that have been appropriated through the town legislature, body votes, and our administrative appropriations. That has been since two thousand and five. There are two entities who refuse awarded CPA funds and one purchase we had failed, and I won't get into that, but it was a major purchase. We have two projects that were discontinued. The Ironworks Park Storage Building, we had a struggle getting the proper preservation on it. And then the World War One Memorial at the top of the common, in fact, had a funding, but there was some questions about how to do it, what to do it, when to do it. And so that has gone into a hiatus. Not to get into everything that we've done, but open space, we've had ten projects, three of which are acquisitions. Keith Homestead, the Murray Needs Farm, Conservation Restriction, and the Stiles and Hart acreage increase. We have saving, planning, or due diligence type reports that we've developed over these sixteen years. Recreation, we have nine projects, seven have been creations, and two administrative activities. Housing, we have six, but only one has been creation or rehab. All the other activities have dealt with coordination or planning and that kind of thing. Historic preservation probably is the winner in terms of number of projects. We've had fifteen real projects and one administrative activity. Moving on, CPA History in Bridgewater, funds fully committed, expended, or available for appropriation. We've spent approximately, approximately seven point eight million dollars has been appropriated for all the categories we're dealing with since two thousand and sixteen, so that's sixteen years. We have two bonds that CPA income covers. One is for the Keith Homestead. It matures in two thousand and twenty-six. And the Academy Building, which we provided over five million dollars to that project. We, meaning CPA, CPC, matures in twenty thirty-six, and we, we put out about three hundred fifty-five thousand a year for that. This is a slightly different piece, but our anticipated revenue for FY twenty-three, that is from July first of this year to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-three, we estimate, as best we can, the finance department does a wonderful job of helping us, about a million twenty-five thousand is that. We have to update the CPA plan every five years. We're in the middle of our current five-year update. And we are required to hold this hearing that we are participating in today. So get to the funding history. I mentioned the, it's a two percent surcharge on local property taxes. There are exemptions for the first hundred thousand of appraised value, low-income households that are less than eighty percent area mean income, low to moderate income, and seniors over sixty years are somewhat exempt. And then the state deed filing fees and state surplus funds provide money to the state trust fund, which gets distributed every year. And the graph that you see here is Bridgewater's income from the surcharge has gone up, 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 and it peaked up a little bit this last year. And down below is the state match. Early in the program, we got a hundred percent. It dropped way down, bounced around, and now it's starting to come back up. And basically, cumulative revenues from the local surcharge is about eight million. The trust fund match has been about three million. So we've had a revenue stream of at least eleven million, two hundred thousand dollars. Also, the cumulative percent match has been around thirty-six percent, I think. I think the anticipation for this year could be another thirty-two percent area. Deed filings have gone down because housing slowed down, so it will be less. So now I'm gonna talk about goals, and I'm gonna try to go a little slower on this because it's important later on, when we do the public intake part of this, that you guys have in the back of your mind some of these things. So to preserve, preserve, restore historic properties to improve public accessibility. Accessibility meaning, how do you get into a building? It's own use and its awareness, and awareness of the town's local historic resources. And this goal mentions the town hall. We also know it as the townhouse or the memorial building. And then there are the privately held buildings with public access. So if somebody was trying to do something in a privately held building, and it was historic, and they needed some access, they could go to the Lions for support. I learned this, this week that the Lions Club puts accessibility ramps, and they've done many of them in town. Or CPA can fund an access ramp. The other one is to preserve the town's historic artifacts, physical things, and then documents through what's called digitization and the creation of a permanent facilities to house these resources. There's some questions around digitization. You can't just do a digitization. It's gotta be part of a preservation activity to do that, but, but it is allowed. Number three, in terms of historic preservation, we can preserve historic resources from development or deterioration through increased local, state, and federal historic designations. In other words, we found there were a number of other areas in town that were not on the historic register. CPA funds could be used to get the designation, so go in, up into the state's registry. Number four, rehabilitate commercial facades and other historic resources. Examples are the town hall or the memorial building. We know that those two are in process for some things. And the whole goal was to help boost downtown economic revitalization. The last one here is to preserve and restore outdoor, public, historic places and public monuments. Public monuments are a bit like the World War One monument that was funded, but then withdrawn or not preceded for because we had a lot of other things to do. So open space, and there's active recreation. I know this is gonna be a little bit long, but I think it's important to have in the back of your mind. Open space and active recreation. We can rehabilitate, restore existing parks, playgrounds, and other recreational facilities. The example that's in our plan is the Jenny Leonard Park and Marathon Park. We can also rehabilitate existing or create new facilities to improve safety and public access to active outdoor recreation facilities, vis a vis what's being, being brought forward for Stiles and Hart. That, that I I'll deal with that in a little bit. We can create a comprehensive and connected bike and walking path network. That's one of our goals. We can also create and restore access to the Town River or other water bodies, for, for example, canoes or kayak. There's a project in town volunteers are running that are trying to get better access down at the Town River Landing. Create outdoor recreational facilities that cater to older residents and individuals with special needs, vis a vis pickleball courts that we funded for down at the senior center and other ADA accessible facilities. And there's a lot of opportunity there. We can also, in terms of passive recreation, we can, the goal is to preserve Bridgewater's farms and agricultural lands. I will say, it's pretty publicly known that there's a process in place to do that. Preserve and restore existing natural open space and passive recreation for specifically enhancing safety and public access. So again, access is critical, but we can do other things on those properties or in those locations. Reserve and acquire strategic private open space properties along water resources and river coordinators, corner, corridors to improve water quality. That's an interesting piece. And to protect priority wildlife habitats and critical natural landscapes from development. So that, that one's a very interesting goal. It's quite long and it's multifaceted. The fourth one under passive recreation is to create, preserve, and acquire neighborhood level open spaces for pocket parks, community gardens, and other outdoor gathering places. There's a lot of activity that could be happening around that. And I know that the senior center landscape plan is also looking to have community gardens out there. Housing, big one. Create and preserve affordable housing options for older residents to allow them to stay in the community as they age, and then prioritize locations that provide easy access to services and other resources. That's, that's a big piece, but create and preserve affordable housing. Create affordable and community housing. And community housing pretty much is essentially affordable housing, but later on, I'll provide a specific definition. It's true adaptive reuse of existing buildings. And in this case, we're saying specifically a lot of historic properties. There is one, in fact, almost ready to go in town. Support a variety of affordable and community housing options specifically for young individuals, young families, and entry-level housing. Again, there's a project in dealing with that. Preserve long-term affordability for existing affordable and community housing units and preserves them through eligible repairs and improvements. Restoration might be a better than repair, but repair could get into maintenance, so it has to fit the definition of restoration. So very quickly, some of the past projects that we have done. The Bridgewater Library had some work done. Music Alley received money to get that pocket park set up. Keith Homestead property was purchased and that specific two acres was sold back out. But we also preserved a large bit of land there. The Legion Field, they put lights up before my time, but we installed lights for safety purposes. The Murray Needs Farm was preserved with a conservation restriction to essentially enable the farm in town to keep going and be more profitable. And also, it also limited some of the housing developments. Mount Prospect Cemetery, back in World War Two, they got rid of their iron fences. to the war effort, so they could build the equipment for the war effort. And CPC early on in in the day paid for the restoration of that fence. McElwain Building, again, there's a lot of things going on there. Memorial Building, if we were in the town, Academy Building, I would point out that it is almost ready to go. And then one of the major recreational things that was done early in the in the, uh, bet, uh, program was the Crescent Streets Girls softball field. And that's the last one is the iconic one is the Academy Restoration. So I'm going to go now into some historic preservation, recreational, housing and administrative activities. As you may or may not know, the, um, town applied for a historic preservation grant uh, from Mass Historic, uh, for roof restoration, uh, and recently, uh, it makes Mass Historic said they'd give the town another twenty thousand, mostly to ensure that we got hidden gutters that were put in place. Uh, and then they also said there was an adder in the plan that was submitted that we could do roof insulation. Well, that matches up what I said earlier about bringing a building, historic building up to code. And then there's a rear pediment that needs some restoration work. So right now the town council has sent it to committee last night for eighty-two thousand. Uh, the pictures are here. I find fascinating. Eighteen eighty, one of the doctors in town, you see the old fire station back here. Uh, in nineteen hundred, you see the, uh, townhouse, but here's the common. And by the way, the common is listed as a historic resource. And then this is nineteen forty-two. The fun thing is here's the fire training tower that's back here. Uh, I'm very interested in that. If the town, uh, needs access to the second floor, maybe we can recreate that. That's just my personal feeling. Uh, so anyway, we're we're moving forward with that project. And then the memorial building, uh, this is the artist, the architect's rendition of the outside restoration work or access work. And right now the trees are planted, the grass is growing, the sidewalks in, and there's a little bit of outside work left to do and on inside. Uh, CPA only funded the access to the building. Other funding sources are doing it. But here's a picture of how they've redone the front steps. Uh, here's the walkways that come up in the picture here, but here's concrete. And this is on the side, uh, to go from the rear parking area up. Uh, historic preservation, the public library, by the way, happy anniversary, fiftieth to those folks. Uh, we provided eighty-nine thousand dollars to preserve four documents and pieces. Uh, I'm told that those are basically the last one is in preservation now. And then we also funded for preservation, climate control, display cases. This is an image of the ones just recently put in the basement. Uh, I will be honest, when I went down there and saw what the archivist had put in there and how it was looking, I I got goosebumps two or three times when I went back down. Uh, there's some ongoing things. The, uh, Central Square Congregational Church has a structural restoration, uh, going on. We funded twenty-two hundred thousand for that and the council approved appropriated it. Uh, there is a deed restriction in process. We have to get that done before that work can really start. Methodist Church, uh, had sent an eligibility and it's under consideration. There are some elements there that may or may not be eligible. And then the Friends of the Jennings Hill Cemetery, the assessment, uh, we've sent them sixty-five hundred in administrative money because they have an individual who will come assess the, um, cemetery, provide scope of what you can do, what you should do. And we need that in order to actually act on an application they had sent some time ago. And Jennings Hill is, I can show you a picture later. Uh, many more activities, open space, recreation, uh, the Stiles and Hart. We purchased, uh, five acres up here. Uh, good news there is the town has applied for a grant and received a grant for to pay back about half of that one point three million, putting trails and other amenities in that park. I play around on Google Earth a lot. This is the walking path I followed one day. Here's the sewage treatment plant and back out. And there is thinking, this discussions regarding getting a bridge over the Town River. And, uh, from the Town River Landing, there's this area back here that goes over to this point. And there's a slight topographic height that goes right down the middle of this. And that's, Katie Doherty told me it's an old rail bed, how they move bricks and stuff out of the area. So that, and that's pretty wetland, wet here. Uh, CPA did pay for borings so that they could get to figure out what the foundation of a bridge might look like there. So that's been done some years ago. Um, and there is a consideration for some additional property here. That's that's a work in progress right now, but that's again, to provide better accessibility into the park. Uh, the other park that's going on is this is the Florida Little Park. Bridgewater Improvement Association owns that, maintains it. And this is the old mobile station and there's considerations there to acquire that land. Uh, and so it's a work in progress and the two will somehow, somewhere along the line will be worked out so that they complement and supplement each other. Open space, we did the pickleball courts out at the senior center. This is an image of them and the new placebo storage, et cetera. And tomorrow afternoon at five-thirty, there's a second session of CPA-funded, um, uh, landscape plan for the senior center. I played around a lot and I thought, well, maybe you could walk, put walking trails back here. There's river up here, but this area here is ripe and some of these other areas are pretty ripe for, um, potential activities, especially in the area around the building. Open space acquisition, Hanson Farm. I I mentioned that we're in the process of trying to work with them to develop a conservation restriction. Up top here is the Murray Needs Farm and there are a number of trails back in here, but the access is very difficult. So there's a lot of thinking about how we might join the two together for various pieces of recreation. And this is simply the most recent activity in housing. This is the McElwain School. Uh, CPC had a tour of it back in the spring when they were about halfway there. This is the McElwain School. This is the elevator access. So because they have, uh, the historic money, the access can be put in there. And that's the elevator. Uh, this is just some pictures of the early studying that's going in. The the building itself is a fourteen-foot ceilings. They worked on the windows. They're they're putting studying in all of these places. Uh, and this is the new building in its early, early phases. Uh, this room right here will be a community room. And over to the right will be a parkland that's public, and this is for public. Uh, and then there will be a park area, playground area for the for the public also. Moving forward on our current budget, we expect seven hundred and seventy-five thousand to come in from surcharge. We're projecting state match of two fifty. So as I said earlier, total estimated revenues, about one million bucks. Uh, we put reserves this way. We did more than ten percent in a couple of them. Uh, and our administrative expenses are down. We we only put four percent in or forty thousand. And we covered the debt service, as I mentioned earlier, on the Academy Building, both principal and interest and on the Keith Homestead. And then we had a small budgetary reserve. Um, quickly where we're at today, I'll get this right. A collections, we're a quarter of the way through. This is the September actuals. Uh, we projected seven seventy-five, we're two nineteen, that's about twenty-eight percent. So I think we're on target right now because those things come in pretty steadily and pretty predictably. Uh, and and then there's other pieces. We expect to hear on the state revenue match come, uh, Novemberish. So we should see that two hundred and fifty thousand, maybe a little more. And then finally, what we have in the bank, uh, there's committed funds that attract this one point seven million dollars. It's drawing interest, but it hasn't been spent yet. And then down here is the total amount of money that's in the bank. And to be honest with you, funds not committed to projects, about one point eight million dollars. Uh, six hundred and ninety-four thousand of that is this budgeted reserve and the, uh, undesignated fund balance, uh, can give be committed to any project that we have in one of those four categories. So we've got about one point eight million that we can work with to appropriate going forward. Not going to spend any time in here. This is just a tracking sheet, what we have in in in, uh, in play right now. We've got a housing historic preservation. We've got some open space. We've got a, uh, housing authority preservation to to do some things. We have to talk about that a lot. The Jennings Cemetery Hill, Gammons Parking Area, Summer Street Property. So those are things that are all pending and of course will require recommendation for appropriation. So now to get back, well, I'm sorry. I wanted to give people a little bit more sense of what we have in town on the Mass Historic Register. So I went to the, uh, their website and there are three hundred and eighty-five items that are listed on the site and you see Bridgewater A, Bridgewater Town Center, Bridgewater Industrial Quarter. I bet most of us don't know where that is. There's Scotland area of town and there's Pratt Town and some other ones that are just areas that are designated. They have a wonderful, wonderful interactive map that plots the location of every historic three hundred and eighty-five that are listed. And this is the town of Bridgewater. You see these areas. Here's, um, here's the industrial park that includes the, the, um, for Memorial Park. A lot of housing up here from the, from the Santa Iron Works period. Lots of history in the down, how down here, some of the older roadways have historic houses. This is another one. Uh, there's some down in South Bridgewater. This includes things like cemeteries. But in terms of buildings, there are three hundred and thirty-five listed. And this is the era. I show the era. I won't go into it, but most of them, the vast majority are the eighteen hundreds, basically. Uh, a few in the nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. This is just another of the map, but I'm showing here the Bridgewater Town Center. This is the town center is all on the historic register to include specifically the common. This is a listing of the, uh, MCAS for various squares, districts, et cetera. So here's the Bridgewater Iron Works. Here's the housing area for for Stanley Iron Works. And then over here is the Spring Hill, Spring Avenue, Greetscape. I'm not sure what to do with that one, but it's on the historic register as being a historic feature of town. And then the Henry Perkins and Henry Company, this is the one that's under consideration for development now. This is the cemetery one. Uh, there's a Conant over here, Street eighteen twenty-nine. They don't have a name for it, but it's out on Conan Street and it's right here. But the other one is the Mount Prospect Cemetery, eighteen forty-two, that we did restore the fence around it. But if you look down here, there's a number of very old cemeteries, eighteen thirteen, eighteen sixties, seventeen eighty-eight. Uh, there's one on Main Street where the old Trinity Church was, seventeen forty-eight. Uh, there's Scotland Burial Burial Ground, seventeen fifty-three. So there, and then here, probably the oldest one in town where some of my ancestors are buried, were first developed in seventeen seventeen. Um, so this, this one here is just the High Street Jennings Hills, just so people know. Uh, you're going out High Street and then, uh, one of the over fifty-five developments is right here. Anything in red here is being removed from from various actions. I think the Covington's Bridge on Auburn Street was nineteen fifty-six, but it's been removed. Uh, Bridgewater, all the orange things are being preserved. When when the dam comes out and the bridge gets replaced, those will be retained and and hopefully shored up. Um, the, there's a concrete bridge over the Town River going between where the Highway Department is now and the actual park area. Uh, that particular bridge is historic. It has some maintenance issues or or restoration issues, but they're not big. Interesting one to me is Bridgewater nine zero one. The Oak Street Bridge was first built in eighteen eighty-six. It's been damaged and probably needs some restoration. I'll just leave it at that. Uh, and then the Town River Dam is obviously coming out. That was two thousand nineteen. And then scheduled for replacement is, as I said, in the industrial transportation corridor, uh, the High Street Bridge and also probably the Perkins, uh, factory place. Goal status, preserve and restore historic properties to improve public accessibility. Use and awareness, we've partially done our goal for this five-year period. Preserve historic artifacts, partial. We showed you some of that. Preserve the historic resources from development or deterioration through increased local, state and federal designations. We haven't really done much on that and I'm not sure what we can do on it, but it's out there as as a goal. We have commercial, uh, facades and historic resources. That's partial because of the memorial building and the, uh, town hall, uh, house and preserve and restore outdoor, public historic places and public monuments. Not, there's no real progress in that one yet. Uh, so what we're going to do now, that I've talked a lot and tried to give you a pretty in-depth background of what we can do, what we have done, maybe what we should do. I'm going to start to pose questions and ask you to respond in the chat box. You're going to type your response and I've coded it all, so it's really easy. So one or two keystrokes. And then I'm going to announce, uh, you have a little bit of time if you need some. And then you all submit at the same time, uh, your response. Everybody sees it. We'll take a look at it. Encourage everybody to take a look at that. And then we'll have, um, a little bit of a discussion as necessary. So here's the first question. Are the, I said this before, are the current CPC historic goals still relevant? And if not, why not? And there's possible responses. Y for yes, C for complete, and R for no longer relevant, too challenging, too expensive, other. So your charge is to go in and respond as you can and want to with those codes. And you can put anything else in there. The why question is probably the most important part, so I'll give you some time. I don't see, there's some more. Great. Okay, I think I don't see anything popping up. Uh, what I see mostly is yes, I see, uh, one comment that we need to do more. Uh, so I think you were pretty well set that the, uh, Summer Street, the older one, there's a question there. Uh, Pat, Mary, I didn't, I said over twenty-five. I didn't want to date you, Pat. Uh, anyway, um, there there are a number of things here. Uh, it seems to me that not to belabor it unless somebody wants to speak up clearly about why they think we should maintain this, uh, it's fine. Otherwise, I don't want to keep you too long and we will move forward. So does anybody have a comment or otherwise? And I can't see folks, so I don't know if they're putting their hands up or not.
Carlton, the only comment is about the Summer Street Cemetery. If anything is being, being done on that, it just says, what about the Summer Street Cemetery?
To my knowledge, nobody has come forward with an, um, uh, I think it's pretty clear it's eligible.
Right.
But I also think that someone needs to, it's town-owned. And so someone needs to put together, and it could be a lot of different committees, et cetera, to come forward if they want to have it preserved. Uh, I don't know the condition of all the other ones. I, you know, I I see, I've been to several of them. Some are very well maintained. Pratt is pretty well maintained. There's one out on Vernon Street that I know is really well maintained. I think the Highway Department did it. Uh, but the one I see that has a lot of stones, head, headstones that are bent over, broken over, is whatever is is there's some in the Summer Street. But the one I see that's really in rough shape is the, uh, Janes Hill one right now. So I think.
Carlton.
I I just, uh, Bill Smith, I just wanted to point out that, uh, that was, by the way, that was an excellent listing of the three hundred and thirty-five properties uh, that were denoted by Mass Historic, uh, on their website. But I I think we should, uh, be clear that these properties are not part of the National Register of Historic Properties. And therefore they, uh, are, they could be demolished. Uh, you listed, uh, for example, the, uh, Henry Perkins Building, which is in that list. And, uh, of course, it, it's my understanding that it's going to be, uh, demolished and, uh, something apartments or something will be built in that area. So these properties are not, uh, not preserved from demolition. The only properties that can't be torn down without specific approval are those in the historic district. Um, I wish more of our properties were on the national register. But of course, that's, uh, maybe that's a topic for another, another conversation.
Well, that that, now that you raised that, what does it take to get on the national? I was under the. I was under the assumption and could make something out of me, um, that if it was on Massachusetts, it automatically went to national.
Oh, no. The, the, no, no. The standards for, for nationals are, uh, determined by the Department of Interior and they are much higher, much more difficult to, uh, to obtain. That, that, uh, we have very few properties that are actually on the Historic Register. The National Historic Register, yes.
Okay. Good information. Yeah, that, well, that leads to some thinking and possibly we need to have some thinking done about that. I know we got the McCallang School on, on at least the Massachusetts. I, I thought we got it on the national, but I'm not sure. Any other comments? Moving on. If I could just push the right button. So the next question is feedback. How focused should the town be on historic documents and artifacts, preservation, restoration? Uh, very, not at all. We're about right where we are. Just keep, stay the course. Uh, it depends. If, if you think it depends, then what? And if there's something else that we are missing here in this conversation, what would they be? Cause we'll go back and look at our goals if, if things change. So go ahead and, uh, put your answers in. Don't see much coming in. Uh, by the way, we will take these things and I'll, I'll take them and break them down. We, this will be provided to me and Gina, and I will take the process and actually put a table together about where people feel, uh, we are. Uh, town needs to be focused too. Okay. See that? Any other comments? Uh, I, I would just comment, um, to Janet's, uh, note. CPC is part of the town. So when you say the town needs to be focused too, uh, is, is it the Historical Commission? We have a member here that's participating. Uh, is it another organization? Uh, when you say the town needs to be focused, maybe Janet, you can expand on that? And if you don't want to, that's fine also.
I, I'm not speaking for Janet. Um, when I read that and I realized that CPC is the town, but I'm thinking she means a town, like through the town manager's office, um, and the town itself, the administration of the town. Um, as I said, not speaking to her, but that's the inter, that's what I got out of her question. Um, I'm not sure if that's what she meant.
Well, maybe we can have this, a discussion about that. I see another one that says, how focused is the town? Yes? Please? Janet, I think we're, we can, I could hear you a little bit, but I wasn't sure what, what you were saying. My, my, my computer.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, hi. Um, I mean, the town, I'm thinking the town council, uh, you know, combination of not just put it on one committee, but town council, it could be kind of everybody kind of be focused on that to, um, realize the importance of everything, be it whoever, not just your committee, but the historic committee, you would think. But town council and town manager, whoever can put input into it, it, it should be um, something to be considered and not just dump them on committee.
Are, are you, are you saying that possibly some of these other organizations could be a little bit more active and proactive in terms of where we're going?
More supportive?
That would be, well, I hear you. That, that's a good comment.
Yeah. And I just quickly on the Summer Street Cemetery, that is the oldest cemetery in town. And, um, I always, I've been wanting to, but I haven't, life is such that I haven't been able to do something, but I've been asking about trying to figure out how to get that preserved or, or whatever the term is. Because it, it, it is, um, it's right there by the college. You can see it and it's kind of a, uh, pet cemetery for me. You know, I mean, a pet project. Um, I found did a, I found out more and more about the cemetery because my son did an Eagle Scout project there. And, um, it, it's just gone. The town is just kind of, it's on the wayside and, and it would be a shame to not have that, um, preserved. So I'm, I'm trying to figure out how we can do that. So that's what I meant about the Summer Street Cemetery. It's called the First Cemetery. And people have buried in there from sixteen hundred on.
Yeah, as I said, I'm a Washburn, uh, trace my to the Washburns and they were the ones that gave the land uh, to do that. Not, they're not my, in my direct line, but they are relatives. Uh, the other place I would suggest people do, go see is the cemetery in West Bridgewater that, their old one. They funded a restoration of that and I had an opportunity to walk, uh, with a gentleman from the south who traced his family back into the Bridgewater's and was amazed. And so we walked that before they restored those. And I've driven by there recently and, and all those headstones that were kittywampus and leaning and all that are now, you know, standing straight to the world proudly. And, uh, it just, it just makes sense to me that, that we could do that. I will say, yes?
No, I was just gonna comment that I go by that cemetery all the time and I think it looks great. It was Bridgewater.
Thank you. So I was gonna say, it, it takes someone to step up and either get an application to us or somebody on one of the, on the CPC committee, uh, to formulate an application to do something. Uh, but it sounds to me like that, that, it's like the old cemetery up in Boston, like it's so iconic and goes so far back. It's one of the earliest parts of the town. Uh, so that, we can take that under consideration as we go forward. I appreciate that very much. Any other comments? Moving on. One more question. And this is, if, if you think we should change our goals, let us know why. If we, if you think we missed a goal here in midterm of our, our current program, uh, tell us why. Um, I don't think anybody's going to want them removed based on the responses already. But should they be strengthened in some way? And if, if so, what is that way? So have at it.
What if we like the way, yeah?
You can just say, there, just say, okay, fine, good.
Okay.
They should, should they be changed? No, but good, good point, Gina. I like that. I see an okay. I see strengthen, preserve more. Okay. Other good comments. Looks like everybody's saying keep them. Okay, now, not everybody's responded.
I like, I like Merrill Lee's comment, maintain, but perhaps better explain publicly. Um,
Well.
I think that's, we have our goals, but even, you know, even I've questioned it, like, what does that mean specifically? And I was, I was part of writing the goals. So I think that's a good point to explain them better.
Is every, is everybody submitted what they want to submit? You don't have to if you don't want. That's fine. Uh, but not seeing anything more going in there. I'm going to move on. And we're gonna, I, come on, computer. So let's talk about open space now. Uh, and we're going to talk about passive recreation first, and then we're going to talk about active recreation. A goal reminder is preserve farms and agricultural lands. Uh, and that's in process. Preserve, except now, open space and passive recreation facilities, specifically enhancing safety. Uh, I think that's in progress, uh, process. Uh, preserve and acquire strategically private open space properties along the water resources to improve water quality and to protect priority. I don't believe that one's active. That's my own personal opinion. Uh, create and preserve, acquire neighborhood level open spaces for pocket parks. I think that's also in process. So the question is, like the Historics said, are the current CPC open space acquisition goals relevant? If not, and why not? If they're still relevant, put an R in. If they're not relevant anymore, and R. If it's too challenging to preserve open space or too expensive, just put that in. If we need to make it, the goal stronger at some point, put that in. And it's open-ended in terms of all the rest. So go for it. Not to bias anybody, but what I can see on my screen, it looks like they're all, everybody's coming back to relevant. Well, we're missing a few, so take your time. Go ahead and submit if you haven't. Good comments. Thank you, everybody. As the auctioneer says, when I was a kid, went to those cattle barns where my dad was buying cattle and he put his little finger up to indicate that he was buying. Going once, going twice. Thank you, everybody. It looks like the majority of folks are saying they're relevant. So that means we're on target. And then some folks are asking us to strengthen them. Uh, and, and, and by the way, if anybody has comments they want to send, uh, Gina, what's, what's the CPC's web, uh, email add, uh, um, it's CPC.
I believe, Josh, what is it exactly? I don't want to say it wrong. Okay.
So if you have, so after this, if you, something comes to mind and you want us to know about it, send us that email. Uh, and, and we get to Joss and Joss provides it to the committee. Okay, I think, I think we're on target here. Active recreation, rehab and restore existing parks, playgrounds or other recreation. Right now I feel like the existing parks are limited to the Styles and Hart. There are other playgrounds and parks in town. Uh, rehab existing or create new facilities to, safety for public access to active outdoor recreation facilities. Uh, I point out that there's the in-process Styles and Hart and the Summer Street property. Um, to create a comprehensive and connected bike and walking path. I think that's pretty limited. I noticed that a number of streets that have been upgraded and repaved have not fully adhered to the town's policy to in fact provide sidewalks and biking and all that kind of thing. Uh, but it's not CPC's responsibility or Community Preservation Act when they're upgrading streets. Uh, but that's just a, a point that I will make. Create and restore access to the Town River or other water bodies. Uh, I think the progress down at the Town River Landing is just very, very exciting. Those folks have done a wonderful job. I had a long conversation with them about what they're planning to do. I know they're communicating with the town manager. Uh, I'm hoping that they are, and I've recommended strongly to them several times that they begin to communicate with Parks and Rec Commission. Uh, so everybody's in the loop. But that's, that's a very exciting development going on. There is a canoe launch down there, but Town River Committee, uh, has cleaned the river of debris and trunks at one point, and I don't know who really has that responsibility going forward. I don't think removal of trees is a restoration piece. Um, create outdoor recreational facilities that cater to older residents. Again, the senior center has this recreational master plan that's in process. And as I mentioned, they're meeting tomorrow afternoon. So the question is, are there lands in the town that the towns should add to open space conservation? If you know of lands that should be added and the town considered acquiring a conservation restriction, where are they? I have another, um, program I work with called Google Earth. And I've tried to map out, and I know the town has GIS capability, but I've tried to map out all of the conservation lands in Bridgewater and I'm sure I've missed them, but so if, if it's no, put an N. If it's yes, put a yes. But if you do say yes, give us some ideas of where we might want to look for, uh, open space and recreation. Have at it. I can type first because I've thought about these a lot already. Good, good. Okay. Good, good. More ideas. The nip's coming up quite a bit. I don't know if folks know, but the town owns quite a bit of the property around the nip. Not all of it, but quite a bit. I'll give you another twenty or thirty seconds. Cross Street. Is that, I just noticed a comment come in, lots of great words. Um,
That's me.
Thank you. Uh, I think it.
Go ahead, Carlton. I think at one time it, it was offered to the town. Uh, Michael might be able to, or Jennifer to answer that. I think it was offered to the town way back when. But it was, or maybe Harry too, that it was just too much wetland. So I'm not sure if it's still privately owned.
Let me clarify where that is. There is a pond that's had some development around it. And it's not on Vernon Street, but it's real close to Vernon Street and it's real close to the bridge that goes into Middleborough. Is that the pond you're talking about?
No, no, no. It's, it's closer. It's we're almost at the corner of Cross and South Street on the right going south on South Street. It's just.
It looks like you're, yeah, it looks like you're riding through the Everglades or the Bridgewater Triangle or something. It is all over the ground.
Exactly, exactly. I don't, I do not know who owns it, however. It could be private.
We, we can follow up on that. I, I, we'll follow up on that and see. But again, water quality, that kind of thing, you know, who knows? Maybe, maybe we can do something. I don't know. No promises at this point. But good points. Anything else, folks? Okay, moving on. So how focused should the town and CPC be on the creation and restoration of public spaces? This is for recreation purposes. Should we be highly focused? A little bit? We're doing okay? Not at all. Uh, uh, we do have an open space plan. I believe, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the open space plan has to be updated next year. And so some of this information that we're talking about here will go to those various, uh,
Carlton, it's twenty twenty-five. It gets updated.
Twenty twenty-five. Thank you. We got a few years. Okay. I see five responses, several. So how focused, we should stay focused. I am here. So how focused, we should stay focused. I am hearing that. I see two Vs. So that, that seems to me that we're pretty much on focus for something of those things. And this, part of this public hearing is to address, are we okay? Are we doing fine? Do we need to tweak things, et cetera? So we're getting great information here. And what, as I said earlier, what I'll try to do is put a little table together with each topic question, and then they'll have, you know, kind of a score that I put out. Not everybody has to answer. And not turning the golf course or et cetera. But I think the golf course is conservation land, and I also think the golf course is, has a designation as an Audubon Society Site for Birds, et cetera. So there's some other things that go on there. Good comments, everybody. Are you ready to move on? Let's do this. Part two. What should the town's focus be on in creating a restoration, restoration of public spaces? I'm going to add, there's some possibilities here, and I talked about the community gardens at the senior center, but I hear lots of people are wishing for community gardens. I know the town has a number of parcels that may or may not be amenable to that. So if that's what people want, where should we look? How should we look? And we have public parks and playgrounds that would need to be developed. Where are they? I mentioned that there is a small playground going at the McKellane School. So basically, what and where? I see a few things coming in. If you're not done, I'll give you another couple of minutes, and then I'm going to ask you to send. And we're getting there. We're going to come to what I consider a challenging area, which is housing. Good comments. Another few of you are typing more, and that's fantastic. Since people are typing longer answers, that's fantastic. I asked for that, and I deserve every answer you're giving me. Okay, oh, there's some more coming in. Somebody's smiling at us. Okay, I think we've got some feedback on that, and I think I see a lot of discussion about bog dog parks and enforcement of those, and maybe having them, maybe not have them. Again, I will say that there are several parcels in town that may or may not be amenable for dog parks or for community gardens. I've, I've actually looked at a couple of places myself, and I've had, I've had a conversation that I know there are some interest in developing those beyond just what's at the senior center. So we'll move on. Recreation goals. Are we meeting our goals in terms of recreation? You see the, they're not relevant, too challenging, too expensive. We've completed it, so we shouldn't be worried about more recreation goals to go forward with. So go ahead and mark your, mark your input. I probably should have put something in that they're right on mark or something, but. And remember, we, we had a number of things to, to work, especially with senior citizens, et cetera. So maybe there's other places. Maybe there are other parks that we should be restoring.
An idea, Carlton, for, or for everyone too, is Scotland, Scotten Field. It used to be Scotland Playground. And there were two softball fields. The back pot is completely overgrown. I don't think it's yours. I think they just use the front for softball. Something could possibly be done with that for a pack or open space. Turn it more into a pack than an over softball field.
So I think I know what you're suggesting, and you're saying that, and I'm thinking about the population growth on the west side of town, may not have as ready, ready access to that kind of area, maybe some playgrounds, something. So you're triggering thoughts on my part. So if anybody else has ideas, that's great. Okay. I don't see a lot coming in. I don't have a way to check if people are typing. As I said before, if we, if you don't get it in here, then send us a email message with, with your thoughts, good, bad, and the ugly, but mostly positive ones. And we're going to move on. My fingers will do the walking. Okay. Again, sort of hammering at the open space and rec goals a little bit much. Are there ones that you would change? They're okay. Add, remove, strengthen. You know, okay, is, there's, okay, now you can put in, okay, that works well. The real critical piece here is, if we want to do something, why do we want to do that? Why are they not relevant? Are they complete? Have they been whatever? We need, we don't need any more? Strengthening is, how would we do that? I think we've got some of those answers. Some of this could be redundant. I talked to myself a lot when I was developing it, and my short term memory didn't make me connect things very well. Good point. Good. I see Jenny Leonard there. And I will remind the committee that we do have the authority to in fact, put something in ourselves. If we identify something that we, as a committee, thought would be important to fund, we can work with the town, but the committee itself can put forth a recommendation to the town. That's something, we depend a lot on people coming to us, but we also have the ability to actually do it ourselves and see how the town reacts. Yeah, I hear you on some of that. And again, I see some of those, like, it's, it's a challenge. I, when I put this together, I know it was a real challenge, because I can't carry the goals in front of me. And if I were doing this in a public setting, in a physical location, I would have all those posted on the wall or at the tables, so you could refer to them and do a bit more. But we are where we are right now. I like some of the comments. That's good. Excuse me for a second. Alexa, stop. Alexa, stop. My Alexa's talking to me. She thought I was talking to her. Let's move on. Housing. We're going to take a little bit of time here because I think this is the biggest challenge that the Community Preservation Act has is in terms of housing. So rather than regurgitate all the goals, because the housing production plan is due for an upgrade, an update this coming year. It expires, and there are a large number of goals in there. I chose not to put those, I do have them in this presentation, but it's the back. And I don't want to go through the details of that because those goals may change. But I will say, this process that we're in right now could have some play in terms of the future, what that plan might look like. But the thing that's really at the top of my head right now is the 2022 Comprehensive Master Plan. There are two goals in there for housing. Preserve, improve, and expand Bridgewater's housing stock in a manner that promotes sustainability and a balance with natural resources. The second one is a bit more relevant to CPC and CPA money. Accommodate the housing needs of seniors, people with disabilities, students, families, and other types of households at all income levels to encourage population diversity and equity, equitable access to housing. I think that's an incredible goal to have written there because it crosses all spectrum of people and population, families, students, individuals, disability, not disabled, that kind of thing. And that's in the Comprehensive Master Plan. And moving on, come on. There are a couple of policies that I wanted to say that Master Plan has in it now. One is to encourage senior housing and disability housing with services. Two, B is to activate the dormant affordable housing trust and facilitate collaboration between the town and housing entities. I think that's an amazing milestone, but a need. Work with other towns to find, fund sharing housing coordinators. That's another piece that is in the Master Plan. I do know, we worked with regional CPCs in the region, got together a while back and dealt with it. And I know at one point, we had to try to have a more of a regional housing coordinator, that kind of thing in the past. So I think that's something that the town, meaning all of us, need to have a conversation around. And then the policy 8.4.4, Smart Growth Approaches to Developing Housing in a Sustainable Manner. Again, using guidance from the Department of Housing and Community Development, as it comes available, valued existing multifamily regulations for consistency with the housing. So that's at a different level than we are, but we're a player in the sense that we can fund, as we said before, a number of housing type projects. And here's where the community housing comes in. I said I had a definition of it. Here it is. The CPA statute defines community housing as low and moderate, low and modern, not or, and moderate income housing for individuals and families, including low to moderate income senior housing. So seniors get in there. They're further defined as follows, and the low income is 80% of the area wide median income, moderate 100%. And there's one that is low or moderate income senior housing as defined, is defined as housing for those persons having reached an age of 60 or over who can qualify for lower or moderate income. I just, I just put those out there because our goals are to create and preserve affordable housing options for older residents. Create and preserve. Create affordable and community housing to adaptive reuse of existing buildings. The goal that we have is specifically historic properties. Free, supportive variety of affordable and community housing options, specifically, again, for young individuals, young families, entry level housing. I think a critical piece of that is entry level. And then the last one is preserve long-term affordability for existing affordable, and that's preservation. And that term preservation, as it relates to affordable housing, state-funded affordable housing, is relevant to some of the things that we're talking about at the Community Preservation Committee level. Are the, so again, same old, same old. Are the current CPC affordable housing goals suitable, effective? If not, why not? If you don't think they're relevant, tell us why. If it's too challenging, why? Is it because we need more staff? Is it because there's no interest? You know, tell me, tell us why it's too challenging. Tell us why it's too expensive. Or why it may not be effective right now. Maybe it's not even important. I don't know. Why? So have at it. I'll give you about three minutes on this one, because I think this is incredibly important.
I like that you said Stacy's Alexa too.
Alexis, she's just listening all the time. Yeah, please, please take some time to think about this because I, housing is a big issue in town. I see all sorts of people. We have too many houses, too many this, too many that. But maybe we need to take a step back and really see what we need in town. And that's what I'm trying to force here, actually. Good comments. Keep them coming. My question, not to be answered here, but I do, I would like a better understanding of the Affordable Housing Trust. I know it's a very complex process in town, but if we had Affordable Housing Trust, they could take on a lot of this kind of thing. And CPC can in fact, send money to an Affordable Housing Trust. The piece is that any money we sent there has to meet all of the CPA requirements. So, you know, it's important to think about that. I know we had one. It's pretty inactive right now. But maybe I should have had, put something else in there. But I just wanted people to understand that we did have an Affordable Housing Trust that can move this forward, but it's not, not active right now. Good points. Good points. Are we about done? There's a good question in here. I'll try to ask your question, Janet, as much as I can at this point. I think it's a fantastic question. And I will say, I'm not sure. There's another question here. Is it legally part of CPA? I think it has to do with Habitat. If you, if the, if the question is Affordable Housing Trust, is it legally part? It's a separate entity. CPA says we can fund it that, but we have to, they have to adhere to any CPA requirements. Yeah, and so to try to answer your question, one of the earlier questions of, is, see, community housing is in fact, Yeah, and sort of to try to answer your question, one of the earlier questions of is, see, community housing is in fact an affordable housing is part of CPA. It is a, you know, you had to capture things, community preservation. But preserving housing that's affordable or creating housing that's affordable is part of the CPA statute. It is a requirement under the statute. It can't be tossed away as not being relevant. It is relevant and it is allowed, is all I can say about. In terms, in terms of the question Janet asked a little bit ago. It's just one of those areas that is part of a community, preserving what I would call the integrity and providing the right housing, that kind of thing. And that's my personal opinion right now. But I do know that it is part of the Community Preservation Act. It's part of the legislation. And it's the definitions instead, I went over earlier. I'm sorry, I can't keep pulling them back up and so you could see it, but it's very clear that it is enabled by the legislation. Are we set, folks? I can't see you, but and I understand it's part of the CPA, but can find it strange. Can't argue with that, but I have to live with the facts at this point. And the town has to be thinking about some of these things. And I think the, actually, I think where the real next challenge is, is in the Housing Production Plan because that has a lot of sway. I think if we get that in place, then that will inform the CP C's thinking and also other thinking in town. So I think developing a very strong Housing Production Plan is part and parcel of all of this activity that we're working on. Any other thoughts, comments, any verbal comments to the public, to me? Otherwise, I think we'll move on. Again, I don't want to belabor it here, but is there, I would ask you, is there anything we need to change? You know, I put all these there to make it simple, but I'll simplify it. Is there something our goals should be changed? Should we take out seniors? If so, why? Should we not deal with affordable housing? It's the law. So let me know what your thinking is. And we're almost at the end of this sequence. And again, email the Community Preservation Committee with any thoughts after this is finished. We're open to things and we'll have discussions around it at an upcoming meeting.
What we may do too is, once we, we consolidate all these answers and come up with something, maybe have it in person after the holidays, just to, to go over everything and try to brainstorm ideas to do that one in person.
Great. Okay, I know we've been at it for a bit of time. I'm going to move us forward. By the way, I forgot to put this up, but I didn't want to bias anybody. You know, there's some affordable housing projects that could happen. We could help fund or develop assisted living. My mother, when she, my father passed, she was quite viable. She moved into a facility where she had an apartment. Meals were prepared, all that stuff, but as she began to lose some of her faculties, she could have been removed into an assisted area and ultimately into a very detailed care facility, all in one place. Unfortunately, she didn't have to go to those other two for variety of reasons, basically a heart valve that she'd had replaced gave out at the twenty-year period, what they predicted, and she said, I'm tired and I'm going home. There's other things that need to be addressed. We can keep the affordable housing going through some zoning things like infill and inclusionary zoning. That's all on the back of the Town Council and the Planning Board and the CED Department. But that's another way to keep affordable affordable housing above the ten percent. Just, this section is just simply trying to figure out what, what should we spend our CPA funds on? So I'm going to move to the, I think, the last slide. Yes, I'm going to ask you to do something for us, and this is a little bit different. I'd like to you to rank the five areas that we, one, two, three, four, five areas that we deal with, with a scale highest to lowest priority. And in order to do that, I'm going to ask you to put number one. If historic preservation is your number one important for us, put one HP. If the second one is affordable housing, put two. If three is open space, put three OS. If open space is number one, put one OS, et cetera. So I'm going to give you some time to actually put these down as to what you think are the most important. Should we focus on active recreation, passive recreation? Where should, if we got a bunch of stuff in, applications in that ranged across some things, it may be because we don't have, you know, we have one point eight million dollars that we haven't allocated yet. But it may well be that we should put our focus on where other people, you know, for example, historic preservation, rather than open space acquisition. Doesn't mean that none of it's going to happen. It just means it helps us prioritize future spending as we go forward over the next several years. So have at it. I'm actually not going to try to rank these because I don't, they're all important to me. You could put one HP, one AH, one OS, you know, that's fine too. And if you choose not to put it in, no problem. Thank you all. Keep them coming. Good job. That's it. Keep them coming. Oh, somebody put off. Wow. Good job. Everybody, great job. Another minute or so, and then we will, I move, I believe, I said it before, but I believe this is the last slide to answer questions on. And it's going to take a while. This is, I did this purposely because that's, this way, we can actually score them in a way that would come out and see where the people on this hearing actually think we should be focused. If push comes to shove, where do we need to focus? And I think the chat is open still, so if you want to put something in there as we finish up, that's great. After we get done with this, the committee will continue its regular meeting. I think Gina can correct me, but I think we have mostly updates, not a lot of actions to take.
Right, correct.
I really can't tell you how much I appreciate, I can tell you, I really super appreciate people taking the time to come out this evening, spend an hour with us, thinking about what we need to do. And I think the committee is going to have some fun working through at the next meeting or two about what you've provided to us.
I, I want to thank Carlton. I think this was, you did a great job, Carlton. I appreciate it. Wish we had more people. We tried to get the, the word out there. It might just be a busy time that people forgot to. But I do appreciate it. It was a great presentation. Thank you.
And, and again, just to finish this up, if you have any comments now or later, let us know. If there's an action that I missed or you thought of while we were doing it, just let us know, either by email or in the chat or even here in public. I'm going to stop sharing right now so that we can all look at each other. Well, I can see all of you. And I really thank you all a lot. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm back. Well, I'm here now. And we didn't lose anybody. Wow.
Well, I think we lost a couple. I don't know who though.
So Gina, it's your, it's your show now. Again, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you again, Carlton. Do we need a motion to leave the public hearing to go into the meeting?
So move.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Okay, Josh, roll call, please.
Tina.
Yes.
Carlton.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Stacy. Stacy, I'm mute. Harry.
Yes.
Maureen. Thank you. The motion was approved.
Okay, great. Back into the meeting, approval in minutes for September twenty eighth. The trash sent out. Any changes or motion to accept?
I don't think I was at that meeting, but I wasn't marked absent or present. I think I remember seeing that all those minutes.
I, I think you were there, Bill, because you were.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, but I didn't notice that you weren't, you weren't there, so you were present.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah. I was thinking the August meeting that I wasn't there yet.
Okay. Okay, motion to accept just for that change. Any other changes? If not, can we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Hey, discussion. Roll call, Josh.
Tina.
Yes.
Carlton. Carlton, you're on mute.
Carlton.
Spacebar, Carlton.
Yep, you're muted. Okay.
Jeff.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Stacy. Harry. Harry, you're on mute.
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion was approved.
For the record, I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Financial reports, Josh, I sent you right before the meeting. I think you already had them, but I sent them to you too, if you can just put up the financial reports. I know Carlton went over them, but I just want to point out a couple of things on it.
Sure, give me just a moment here.
Okay, take your time. Okay, great, thank you. We've worked with the finance department to try to simplify these forms because it was confusing that the positives were really negative, were red, and the negatives were black. It was confusing. So Finance Department, Laurie Corrini and Tony Somonti have updated that to make it easier to read. And if you notice, there are one on the right, the balance sheet. You might want to just pinch it out depending on what device you're looking at it on. As Carlton said, the fund balance isn't actually, it's money that's been encumbered, but not, it's not spendable because it's encumbered, but it's included in the total. And what Laurie has done for us is the bottom report on the left, you'll see, I think, five things that are highlighted. If you add all those projects that we voted, but still has money to expend, those total that one point seven million. So it's easier for us to see what actually makes that up. So it was confusing to a lot of people what's a C P A reserve for continued appropriation. So Laurie's kind of lumped them together and corresponded them together, so makes it easier. Any questions on that or on the reports in general? As Carlton said, it leaves us about one point eight million to spend, actually spend that we could vote on. Okay, Carlton, we don't need a motion for that. Okay, thanks, Josh. Okay, I'm actually looking at two agendas here because there's a mix-up in the way the agenda was done. So I'm going to follow what was posted. But there's a couple of changes here. Applications received, and as Carlton said, these are mostly, mostly just updates. Semestreet property for the mobile station. We met with the town manager, Assistant Town Manager, Director of Community Economic Development the other day. There's some changes that Michael is, is making to correspond with the money that the towns have voted for the same project. We're holding off on that now at his request. He's working up another spreadsheet on it for for updated figures, and he'll get that to us and hopefully we can vote in November for that. Central Square Congregational Church, phases two and three, that's on hold right now too. Okay, any discussion on applications received? Okay, hearing eligibility forms received. Hanson's phone, it has been received. We're just waiting for the town to the survey and a couple of other things before the conservation restriction is done by. And once that's been worked on, the town will submit, the town manager will submit a full application for that. So the eligibility form has been received and approved. The next two, Housing Authority, Hemlock Drive Windows and Exterior Improvements, it says vote. We actually voted that at the last meeting. Same with the Methodist Church for Historic Restoration. We voted both of them as potentially eligible, and both the areas are working on their applications. I know Housing Authority, I have a colleague, our authority, who is the director, that we should have the application in time for the November meeting. Okay. Histor, Methodist Church, I believe they're working on their application as well. Administrative account updates. Restoration of gravestones, it's, we're still where we were before. The folks working on that, the applicants had put in that they were trying, they had told us it wanted to. that they were trying, they had told us it wanted to contract with a person who's, who's well-known for restoring gravestones. So they were working, trying to, to get him in there and to complete the study. Senior Center Design Study for Recreation Trails, Recreation Areas Trails, Community Gardens. They're in process. We paid the first bill to the landscape design, landscape architect. The next planning meeting is tomorrow at 5:30 at the Senior Center. Any questions on any of those? And or just kind of whipping through them, small just updates. Funded project updates. The library archival and digitization project is just about completed. Carlton showed you the pictures. If you haven't been into the library to see them, the display cases, I highly recommend it. It's, they're nice and Alison. I'll probably say her name wrong. Aserki. Aser. I think that's how you say it. She has put it temporary displays like teaser displays that it's great. So I encourage everybody to go and look at those. Styles and Hat, Hatland Improvements. I believe their town manager's office is still waiting to hear back on their application for the matching grant. I don't, of Kim or if Michael's still here, Jennifer has any update on that? But I know it is in process.
Gina, I thought they had been awarded already.
Were, were they awarded for that? Kim, Kim, do you know that? Can you?
For Harry.
Kim? Okay, we'll, we'll check on that. They may have, I thought they were still waiting, but they, they may have. We'll, we'll check that, but it's in process. The whole project is in process. Central Square Congregational Church, we're still working on the deed restriction in the grant agreement. We had said we were going to hold off on the agreement until the deed restriction was in place, but we're looking at, at both of them at the same time. Next, pickleball courts, we're just waiting for the final report. Talking pickleball courts, one of the, just aside to that, the Paxton Rec person that was very, very instrumental in getting those built was Charlie Simons. I just asked for prayers for Charlie. He was on vacation, had a heart attack. He's still in the hospital.
Oh.
South Carolina, so just asking for, for prayers and keep Charlie in, in mind. Okay, memorial building. Carlton alluded to it's our part that we funded for the accessibility is about done. I believe they said by the end of the year, they should start moving in. Do I have that date right, Carlton?
I think. I understood it's either late this year, probably early next year, that they're putting the final touches on now and hopefully they'll open the building early next year.
Okay, great, thank you. McElwain School, if you're right, I, you can see that it, it looks great, the buildings, they had their lottery. I believe the lottery is coming up this week or next week, is coming up soon. To actually lease the, the units. I've asked the, one of the developers, if they, once they get a little further and some of the units are a complete, if CPC can walk through them again. And he said yes, so we can look forward to that. I, I have a question for Bill.
Okay, me?
Yep, you.
Yeah.
The sign has nothing to do with the apartments themselves, but the sign on the front of the building used to say WH McElwain School. They've taken that down because I guess it was just a, I thought it was concrete, but they said it was just wood. Their buildings on their mass historic list. Does, can they just not put it back up because it's their intent not to put it back up?
Well, I, I would say we really have no jurisdiction over that. I mean, the town could decide to put it up, I guess. I think it's important for the sign to be there.
I do too. Would that be a mass historic that they can change it?
No, no, I don't, I don't think so, no. I mean, that, that's just a, a list of historical properties. Those 335 properties that Carlton went over. So there really no, no restrictions. We have no authority to do anything about that. If they were on the, if it was on the National Register of Historic Places, then it would have to go back. It couldn't be removed. If it were in an historic district, it, it couldn't be taken down without permission. But just because it's an historic property doesn't mean there's any review process except through the planning board or some office like that, building inspector.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Unfortunate.
Yeah, I, I, that's what tells the whole building is that sign.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next possible project updates, the purchase of the Broad Street property. That piece of property is, if you're heading towards East Bridgewater, right after the Chinese restaurant, there's a billboard, it's a property in that area. They just passed papers for the person that owns it and they have offered it to the town. So that's, that's in process and it's moving right along. Okay, and we'll public here, we moved to the top. We had no new business unless somebody has any other old business or any new business. Okay. Committee representative reports, I don't know if anybody has anything to add. I know Paxton Rec just has the pickleball courts. As I said, we're just waiting for the final report. If anybody has anything from there, if it is to add.
Getting back to the sign on McElwain School just for a moment. It seemed to me that since we helped fund that project, if the committee felt it important that a sign be placed on the building, I, I don't see why we couldn't request that, that a sign be installed. We could write some kind of letter to the town or something because we do have a vested interest in the project.
Right, right, that's a, that's a good thought. Thank you.
I, I will remind the committee though, that CPA funds came out of housing, not historic preservation. But I, I'm reminded that CPC paid for it to get it on the master or mass historic registry. So CPA covered that cost.
Right, right.
Right. Okay, well, we'll think about that sending, possibly sending them a letter. Checking with the town too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any other old business or new business? Okay.
Oh, oh, I wanted to say one thing.
Yeah.
Lastly, it was a great presentation, Carlton. And I was just wondering if those slides could be preserved and put on a website, or maybe you've already thought about that, you probably have. I mean, it, it's all of, of those slides gave such important information about the important work that this committee does. And, and I still don't think the town knows everything that we do. I mean, Gina does this incredible amount of work organizing these meetings. The, the financial aspect of it is very complicated. The politics, it's working with the state, working with consultants. Those slides were, were very well done. So I don't know what website would be appropriate, whether it's the town website or our website. But we, they should be preserved.
Bill, to, to, to answer that, Bill, I will, I will save this as a PDF.
Yep.
And it will be sent to Josh to post on the CPA, our committee's website page. We're trying to build documents there, so it will be there. I will also note that the meeting was recorded and it will be on the Bridgewater YouTube channel.
Right.
And one thing to note too, that I meant to say during, during the presentation. There's something said, instead of elaborating on, or even some things Carlton did elaborate on, he put links there for more information, like to look at the master plan of the housing, housing plan. One link I want to go into is the historic areas in Bridgewater. He's put links for all those things. So if you have more interest in those, you can, you can click on it.
Good idea, yeah.
Okay, I, I do have, and I probably should have studied it, the stat which is comments. The Coalition Newsletter, I sent it out to everyone who thinks it was last week. There are a couple of attachments there that explain a lot of. There was one, I pointed out that explained about restrictions. What we can do for housing to support how the senior housing. I think if you haven't had a chance to read it, I highly, highly encourage you to. There was a very helpful article. I read these things and think, I know CPC and it's, I think, oh, wait a minute, it's good reinforcement, even if you think you know it. It was anyways. And if you haven't subscribed to the newsletter, it comes out not that often. I would encourage that too, just always some helpful information in there. Okay. Lastly is the next meeting day. Is because the fourth Wednesday is the night before Thanksgiving. And in the past, the CPC has opted not to spend the night before Thanksgiving with me. Don't know why. So there's five Wednesdays in November. So we'll have our next meeting on November 30th at 6:30 also, so.
Tuesday. Okay.
I was gonna say, did I have the wrong date?
No, no, I, I, I can't read my calendar, it's too small print, my eyes can't see it. So it looks like the 30th is a Wednesday and I don't believe the planning board meets that night.
Right, because they're the first and, first and third Wednesdays. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just gonna say 30th, sounds good unless everybody doesn't want to do it.
Right, this 30th sound okay to, okay, thank you. I think that's it. Again, I want to thank Carlton for a great presentation. I, yeah, I, as I said before, I thought it was wonderful, slides were wonderful, very important. What we can think about is once everything's consolidated, right, information to maybe after the holidays to have something, something in person that we can kind of brainstorm, like people say, you know, goals should be strengthened. You know, they want to see the goals up next to the answers, so we can do something like that in person as a follow-up. But I thank everyone who did attend, our committee members, our town officials, the general public, I appreciate it. I wish we had more people, but I appreciate the ones that did come out. So that's all I have to say.
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Nobody wants to second it, nobody wants to leave.
Second.
Josh, roll call, please.
Gina.
Yes.
Carlton.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Bill.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Maureen.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion was approved, meeting adjourned.
Great, thank you so much. Josh, can you print out that, that chat for us too at some?
Yeah, I have to wait for the Zoom to finish downloading and then I'll be.
Okay. Okay, no problem, just whenever. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.